Denver, the Board of Selectmen need to order for December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. All any selectmen present in town and administrators present, recording for the citizens of Dunbar and Mr. Lee Martell. Thank you, Lee. All right, gentlemen, we have, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for December eighth, twenty twenty-two. My second, any discussion on those minutes, gentlemen?
Nope.
You're in that home favor?
Aye.
Second, Justice.
I make a motion to approve the seven fifty-eight P M. non-public meeting minutes of December eighth, twenty twenty-two amended.
I'll second Justice's motion. Okay. Discussion, should these be sealed, gentlemen?
I make a motion to seal these.
Not a motion, but you recommend they be sealed?
I second your recommendation.
Okay.
The note be sealed.
All in favor as the minute for the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Lee, those uh, be sealed?
I'll make a motion to approve the eight thirty-two P M. non-public meeting minutes from December eighth, twenty twenty-two.
My second, any discussion on those, gentlemen?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seal. That's gotta come back to us some signature. Okay, I'm gonna open up for a public comment outside the back row. Back row, anything for public comment? Back row, middle row, nope? Okay, I think we got a bunch of people in the general, so that's all good. Okay, we closed public comment, and we're in the middle of doing budget reviews now, and first one on the agenda is the town clerk. Linda, if you'd be so kind, come on up.
Always needed.
Can I just give a talkies to them, can I?
I give a project. I know Lee usually gives you, before we start with budget, just where we are money-wise from my department, so this kinda gives you, I just did the past three years. We still want to know where we are, not as of yesterday.
We still have a little ways to go.
And we still have a couple of weeks left. Now, you'll see a little bit more too, because we did increase that municipal agent fee by fifty cents. That'll account for about twenty-five hundred dollars a year, or more actually, because we've already done five thousand registrations this year, so fifty cents a piece, that brings it up a wee bit. And I have some other things here that miscellaneous stuff, I usually do this for Lee, these are things that are not in my money item, but she adds to, to hers.
Okay.
And that's just so she knows how much budget for certain things.
I think these are the one coming, these come out of office overhead for the entire building.
That's correct.
Thank you.
But just so I don't blindside her later, this gives her something to do.
Do it all.
Yeah.
Looks like you guys are gonna enter for one stand-up.
Yeah, I really like this stand-up, um, it's made a difference.
That's fine.
It's made a big difference.
It does make a difference when you're under a lot of pressure, standing up changes the whole.
Oh, when I'm under pressure, then I sit right down, I can't even stand.
My system, how it changes the problem.
No funnies.
No funnies. I have a few extra, I have a few extra to get to, I'm passing on, thank you.
This is pretty easy, just gotta do a little tink, right?
It does.
Okay. What's the last next year, huh?
Yeah, we got one thing.
Oh, God. That's a good year.
It's a good year.
We'll do a draw right after a while.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, let you go by line by line, if you want to just talk about it, Linda.
Okay, well, we'll skip the town clerk salary for last. Uh, deputy town clerk, I'd like to increase the deputy hours to twenty hours a week. Um, I wanted to do it last, it's kinda hard to say, because we had hope, you know, for the beginning of the year, and then we were several months without a deputy, so Jennifer's taken what's left, and it's just spreading it out, um, so she can get in all the learning she can. I wanted to do twenty hours last year, but my deputy at the time was adamant about not wanting more hours.
I think what they're learning, I think twenty hours is very reasonable.
I think so too, and, and.
A lot to learn. How many hours are you doing now per week?
She's, actually, she's doing about twenty right now, with what was left over.
What was, what was, by Judith, the last year?
Sixteen, I think.
I think sixteen.
So you'll increase it by four hours.
Correct. And I have to tell you this, that she just made my heart sing. You know, when, um, when the, when Dave Scanlon was elected Secretary of State, Jennifer took it upon herself to go to that year, and she spent the entire day at the State House so that she could see the process firsthand. I didn't know she did it until after the fact, and I just wanna tell you, that is so impressive to, to wanna learn that process so much, to spend.
She still very, very well, and we could, we could pick up on it very easily at the voting as well.
She great with numbers, huh? She very good.
Well, you'll be, you won't be changing your hours, but you think so you should be working more.
Correct, she'll be shadowing there.
No evening hours still, and no Fridays.
And no Fridays. It's not, if I open Fridays, I would have to cut the number of hours I'm open a day. I'm open thirty-two hours a week, there are bank deposits that need to be made on top of that, two to three days a week, that's all included in my forty hours, plus, I'm here a lot of times, Lee will see that I'm still here at five o'clock, and later, a lot of days, I generally get here between seven-thirty and quarter of eight every morning, so I work well over forty hours as it is, so open up Fridays, I can do it, but the hours, the number of hours per day I'm open are going to be less.
And it's been thirty-two hours for a long time now, right?
Yes.
With COVID, you reduced evening hours, where did?
We didn't reduce them, we arranged them, I shifted them, it's the same number of hours that it was before COVID, it's just not evenings anymore. And during COVID, one of the things I learned is that most of the transactions I do don't need to be done in person. They can be done by mail, they can be done online.
Okay. I think a lot of companies learned that as well.
I think they did too, the bank has never brought back there, the banks are still closing at four o'clock.
Yeah, I don't like that.
It makes it hard for me to get change, because I, you know, I have to scoot in there ten minutes before they close, and I always felt bad, because I have that whole pile of, you know, the town deposit, the state deposit, and then I need change on top of it, so the inconvenience there is, it makes it hard to get change when I need it.
Okay, okay. Linda, can you do one?
Already, um, elections, we discussed, there's only one, hooray. I didn't factor in any special elections, obviously, we're gonna have to eat that if there is one. In the past, when there've been special elections, we've worked with the skeleton crew, because we, we don't get a huge turnout. Um, the election meals, I made it a little bit higher than before, because somebody likes to drink a lot of coffee and make coffee friends. But I, I did notice that I'm factoring in a little bit, in case, uh, where we go for meals increases their prices, as so many places are.
You had three elections last year, correct?
Yes, we did.
So you basically, you flat, you flat budgeted, basically, essentially.
We, we still had a little bit left over at the end of the year.
But you kept it the same.
I kept it the same, just to.
Cover increases.
Yeah.
Good, good, good.
Um, dog license fees.
That's it, that's it.
No choice, people are moving into town with their children and their dogs, and we're gonna wind up having to buy more dog tags, it's gonna put a strain on the police department chasing them.
So that, that expense is the tag for the tags?
That, that expense is every dog license that the town issues.
Yes.
The state gets two dollars and fifty cents off.
Okay.
The town gets the difference.
So is that, is that, in, it's not, is it in, in, is it intake or outtake?
That's probably what we're gonna have to pay the state, or the intake, standard licenses, seven fifty.
It's a zero, zero sum game, in other words, okay.
Like, the standard license is seven fifty.
Okay.
Um, we have to give two fifty to the state.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, we give two fifty to the state.
Okay, great, 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 great.
Uh, marriage licenses and vitals, I had been keeping them at a thousand dollars per year for budget, but based on some history, I've gone ahead and lowered them, we don't seem to be having as big a call for that.
Okay.
Okay, so town clerk, what do you wanna ask me?
No, I, I just wanna make sure that you're, you're with the four percent cost of living we, we.
I get it.
Okay, great.
And is it based on the thirty-two hours we talked about just now?
No, it should be based on the week.
It's an annual salary.
It's an, oh, salary.
It's a, it's a flat rate.
Okay.
Um, what I did do, and I'm gonna tell you right up front, so you don't have to do the math, um, the board has gone ahead and they reviewed all the employees' step wage scales and brought them up, I'm guessing four percent, uh, Lee did give me all of her charts, but I gotta tell you, I had a hard time following the charts.
Okay.
So.
Those are drafts, by the way.
Right, so. Um, from the gist of what I could get, it was, uh, all of the employees were their wage scale.
We have variable percentage, but the average is about four.
The average is about four, so I took, um, last year's salary, and I did add the four to it, um.
And you put the four percent for cost a little bit also?
Okay, on top of that.
That, we're not gonna do that.
Okay, so now I've got my speaking points on that.
Okay.
So, give you a little history, because two of you were not in town back then, the first step wage scale was established in May of two thousand and thirteen, the first one that I'd ever seen, um, I can't remember if they had me to select or at the time.
I think that was developed by Les, right? He was.
It was even Les, me and Mur.
I think it was Les, Ted, and Mur.
No, Ted hasn't been here.
I don't think Ted was here. Okay, anyway, it was established in May of two thousand and thirteen, so if you take a look at this, this is a copy of the two thousand and thirteen step wage scale, and if you look through, you will see that the town clerk is the only elected position that's on that list.
As I recall, there was a lot of confusion back then, because you were under the, the assumption by the erroneously, by the previous boards, that you were under their supervision, and when I first came on, that was immediately corrected by Bob Pike, and I supported Bob Pike, and take.
Brian Pike or Bob?
No, Pike, in a sense that we needed to get you out of the thumb of the selectman, because you were elected official independent of the supervision of the selectman.
Just as the library trustees are the cemetery trustees.
Correct, and I worked with you, I worked with you to make that happen, and I supported that fully, and so you were initially included in the step system, because people, at least my assumption was, you were under the thumb of the selectman, and the thing is, that was rectified about seven years ago, six to seven years ago.
Well, if you'll let me go ahead and finish, thank you. So, so if you look at that, town clerk was the only position included, the reason they included it was because six years prior to that, the voters of Dunbarton voted to give the town clerk the same benefits as a full-time employee, regardless of elected or whatever, town clerks have to be elected, that's it, that's true, so, but the town can vote to do benefits for the town clerk, it's up to the voters, it's up to the legislative body of the town. So, when they put this scale together, they included the town clerk because of that vote, and because the board at the time recognized the intent of the voters, and so when they crafted the wage scale, they included the clerk. So this newest wage scale was crafted while the town clerk is in mid-term, so the town clerk this time is not being afforded the same opportunity for inflation adjustment, given the other positions. I'd also like to remind the board, the board themselves, not you, because you aren't here, so you're off the hook.
You're talking the four percent?
I'm talking the wage scale, not the, I'm talking the four percent on the wage scale, not the four percent holdup.
Okay.
So last year, the, the board's selectmen gave themselves a raise without taking it to the voters, and this is not to stick it in your face, this is just to remind you that the board did this last year, so this new wage scale was crafted, I'm mid-term, I had no opportunity to have any inflation adjustment, nothing, with this new wage scale, so.
Now, you're getting the four percent call.
Call, that's what I, and that's only if the voters approve it.
So, going back and forth here, because we keep talking about you had no opportunity for wage scaling.
Because this year, just within the last few weeks, the board took every employed position, and you adjusted the wage scale, you made the steps, you put more steps in, that's what I'm talking about, so I've added that to my own, even though the board said they were not going to do it. Every budget year, I mean, I could've pulled the elected card every year, and I could've asked for more money.
Now, just, just, just to clean up one thing.
Yes.
We didn't say we're not doing it, we're doing it on the, um, election year is what we're doing.
Yes, you did say.
So we didn't, we did some of our positions already.
In August.
And we're planning to do those other positions as they come up.
Yes, and I, I do, I am aware of that, and that.
So it's not that we're not doing it, because there's several of them that we didn't do.
Right, because their terms aren't coming out, right. Oh, I'm with you, I understand.
Okay, I just wanna.
I read, I have the August minutes of your meeting.
Right.
And I saw what you were doing.
I just wanna clear it up, because when you say we're not doing, we actually are doing it, we're just not doing it right now.
You're not doing it unless you're coming to a determined, right?
And that was kinda determined, um, last year, when Bob was here and Justin wasn't here, he decided to do it a few years after, in fact, that's why he did the selectman, because he was getting out as a selectman, and he never wanted to vote for raise for selectmen when he was a selectman, so he was leaving that year, and he thought that was the year to do it, because he was leaving.
And I thought we had great input from you, in a sense that, uh, we should have, you make sure, we waited to announce it in January, well before the election period started for elected officials, so it can be announced publicly.
Exactly.
And I thought it was a great recommendation.
Wanna know what they're getting into.
Exactly.
So I didn't wanna cut you off, I just wanted to clear up just a couple of things, because we are, we are planning to do it for your position and those other positions when they come.
Right, but it's not gonna help my position right now if I don't run again, so I'm in the old wage scale, is what is the point I'm making.
Yep.
So, this was decided after I took this particular term, and so I had no, no recourse, had, had you done it before, my term was up before, I could've made the adjustment to get me into this, you know, the inflation as it is. Anyway, I, um, I just wanna remind the board that I work just as hard as any town employee, I'm affected by inflation, just like any town employee, uh, I have to pay for guests, just like any town employee, and I feel that I'm being penalized because the position is elected versus employed, and, and I have to tell you, some selectmen, past and present, they use that elected card, um, it is, been twenty-six years worth of that, and I just.
Well, I'd use it now, I'm gonna use it now, because the thing is, your salary is basically, you know what your salary was when you were elected, you ran into that auspices, and when I first came on, I wanted to disinclude elected officials from cost of living raises, and I sat back, thought about it, I said, that's not really fair, and so I included all elected officials, and I went with the board to include them in cost of living wages from day one, since I became a selectman, and to say that you're not getting cost of living raises, so you've got three percent last year, you get four percent this year, you know, i- i- inflation's high, I realize that, and I'll let you continue, but the thing is, I don't wanna see here that you're saying you're not getting anything, and your salary's stagnant, it's far from that, because you participated in every cost of living raise, and we, this board has given out to all employees.
And, yes, elected employee, I know, I absolutely agree, I'm not, I am not challenging that whatsoever, I'm just saying that I feel that my wage scale should've been adjusted along with the town employees, because I was part of the wage scale from the beginning.
Linda, we've been, uh, just so you know, ever since I became the selectman, we've been beginning to look at these wage scales for all these different departments, and every year, we seem to, we've had policy meetings in the middle of summer, we've said we're gonna look at it, and we seem to look at squeaking wheels other years, and this year, we decided to try and go through everybody, um, but the determination of elected officials was kinda done last year, as they're, as they're coming up, so that we can put that out there, so the voters and everybody will know what their position's gonna be during that elected year, so we can advertise it right and show it right, and so everybody will know it, and with determining elected officials, so we're not trying to pull you out of it by any means.
No, I'm, and I'm not saying.
I just want you to be sure, and the inflation portion of this, what the cola's taking, taking place of, and I know we tried to go to two percent last year, when we went to town meeting, the voters bumped it up another percent, so we knew they wanted at least three percent, Mike actually wanted to go higher than that, I mean, this year, and because I think this economy is gonna come down next year, so I didn't wanna bring it way up high this year, and then next year go down to one or two percent, like the previous board before I got here was a point seven, and I'm hoping not to do that, I wanna try to keep it, you know, around the three percent range at least, and if we could do that as a town, I think it would be steady or more beneficial.
And in a second grade, and that was for elected officials, and we looked at wages for our employees, and the thing is, uh, I don't ever remember a time when this board ever looked at wages for employees, and what we use as a guideline, we do the, shall we say, examination of all other peer towns, and I'm not talking about Manchester, Concord, I'm talking about same-sized towns, or similar-sized towns to Dunbar, to see what's the going rate for, uh, road agent, transfer, excuse me, not road agent, transfer station attendant, clerks, you're deputy town clerk, and we looked at that, and, and some people got, uh, as we looked at it, yeah, some people got major raises, and some people got smaller raises, and we, we're not being the top, we're not looking for the top, we don't wanna be a top payer, we don't wanna be the bottom payer either.
Oh, I understand.
So our goal was to get something in the middle, now, there were some positions that we were like at the top, at some positions, we were like third from the bottom, and we tried to adjust them, some people got no raises, except less cost of living, because we were near the top end, and that was our, for wage employees, that was our effort to at least equalize it, and make sure we have a competitive workforce that we can maintain and retain. That was our goal.
I, I understand that.
And that has nothing to do, that has, those wages, those, those increases, which you did not participate in, were directly related to employees of the town, not elected officials.
So I, I know the wage scales you're talking about, looking at the other towns, the municipal association puts out their salary, wage, and benefits, right? Yes, and that is an awesome tool, and it's a great guide, but it's only one part of the guide, it doesn't tell you how long people have been there, doesn't tell you if they have a degree, so it's a great guide, but it doesn't tell you everything, so I'm just suggesting that you look beyond that and consider some of the other things, and I also think, looking, you look at the wage scale, and you then look at the big ones, Nashville, Manchester, and you bring it down to towns of our population, which is the right thing to do, to give you a better idea, but then, go to your microeconomic portion, go to each town, look at what just your people in your building are being paid, so I'm basing it on, I'm looking at, I feel that my position is commensurate, say, with the building planning and zoning person, we have the same skill set, I can't say that mine would be the same as Woody's, even though I'm a department head and he's a department head, he has a different set of skills and tools that he uses for his position, so I'm merely comparing this more with another person who runs a department, I run a department, I run a department that brings in considerable amount of money, and I'm looking at that factor, which you're not gonna see in the municipal associations.
The town clerk in another town that doesn't do anything different than you, what does a town clerk in another town do that's so different, do they register automobiles? Do they collect tax, I mean, taxes, do they issue licenses and fees and dog licenses? What is the difference between one town versus another? I think the municipal association is a great tool that we have to compare salaries.
But, so.
And what makes yours' position so much better than, say, Huntington, that you have to demand more, not demand, but ask for more dollars?
So, I do the same thing that the city clerk in Nashville does, pretty much, I register cars, license dogs, whatever, I'm not asking for the city clerk in Nashville's wage, I'm coming to something that's more commensurate with us, anyway, we need a one and.
I'm in agreement with everything you're saying, just, we decided earlier already to do that on the year of elections.
Right, but you didn't do it before Mike, well, anyway, we don't, we'll go by.
Yeah, I can't go back, I can't go back to years.
We can go on and on about.
When is your term ending, I guess?
Twenty twenty-four, March.
Because we did, we did talk about doing it when, when your position.
Your term is March. When I work it, I want that correct, when is your term ended again?
March twenty twenty-four.
Correct, okay.
What did you think I said?
No, that's, it's, and you, so you're from this, about March, it's coming.
So I agree with everything you're saying, Linda, and, and if you run again, you know, we're addressing, if you don't run again, we're still addressing it.
Right, and I'm, I'm glad that you are, and I, I think that that's certainly within the purview of the board.
And it's, it's, it takes, like, it takes the personality out of it, we're gonna announce it regardless of who gets elected to your position.
Absolutely, and I know you will.
But to take, to take it down a step, what I think like you're saying is, um, if you watch all the meeting minutes, some of, some of our positions got zero percent, some got four percent, some got as much as fifteen percent to correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, and that's where you said the average was four, and that's why.
And that's why the average was about four, and so when you, when we come back to that, looking at it, you know, we look at that a year and a half from now, it may be higher or lower than four as well, you know, so, we'll look at that and look through all of them, but I think that, I'm in agreement with everything you say, about the average work, how long you've been here, all of that stuff, I'm in agreement with, and you shouldn't look at it like somebody that just started a clerk's position.
No, but David, elected official, I, I mean, I've been here working, this is my second term, and for you, it's, you're coming up on your second term, we don't get paid extra for having two terms, you get paid a flat rate, whether you're elected or not, you can be elected ten times, you don't get ten, you don't get raises just because you're elected again, we, we're out of this tenure stuff, the thing is, it goes from election day to election day, and that's the, that's the term, and the salary, whatever, whatever we decide as a town, that's what's paid to the elected official, and it doesn't go by personalities, it doesn't go by how many times you've been elected.
I'm not trying to pick on you, it's just that, this is, as I've said many times, twenty-six years of this, and twenty-six years of having different boards of selectmen every time we get a new board, it's a new set of rules, a new set of procedures, a new set of everything, and there are some that have gone out of their way to target the town clerk, you can't constantly.
Target the town clerk?
You can't constantly be targeted and not take it personally.
And who's targeting you in this board?
I, I'm not saying you are, I'm saying that, I understand, but this has been.
But those are fighting words you're saying, I mean, you, you're saying that previous boards have targeted you, I think that's unfair.
Yeah, I think.
Yes, but the thing is, I just don't, you, you throw these words and accusations out there, and the public's hearing this, and saying like, why are we targeting you?
Like, I said, previous boards.
Please.
I said, previous boards, okay, so previous boards, so year after year of, of that, you get a little bit defensive, and so you'll have to excuse me if I get defensive, but it's been a lot of years of that, and I.
Well, I apologize if I'm getting defensive, defensive too, in a sense that I took this job to be fair, equitable, and accountable to the voters, the thing is, uh, it's the voters' wallets I have to watch out for, and, uh, it's, it's their wallets and their taxes I have to be vigilant for, and if I come across a little bit, shall we say, miffed a little bit, because, uh, you know, accusations, but previous boards, I'll, I'll acknowledge that, okay, but it hasn't, this, it hasn't been done in this board, the previous board, and the previous board before then, because I've been on all three boards. Go ahead.
So I'm gonna go back. I'm just gonna finish with this and maybe offer a suggestion. The article from two thousand and seven that the legislative body of Dunbar voted on. To see if the town clerk perceives, to see if the town will vote to change the method of compensation for the town clerk from a combination of salary and statutory fees to an annual salary, because at the time the clerk was paid fees and salary. And then it goes on to say, to an annual salary plus benefit package offered to full-time town employees. Town clerk's position will change from part-time to full-time effective April one, while remaining fees paid to the town. And it says, this package shall be reviewed annually for equity purposes. So I know you have your three-year thing that you're doing, but I'm thinking that this wording of this article that was approved by the town allows me to come in and ask for you to review it because it is.
See, my thought is, by that being worded, annual would be including you in the cost of living raise, which is what.
And that's a problem that I'm sorry, and that is a problem that we have faced this board, previous boards. The wording might be muddy, the wording might be gray. And so I said, every time we get a new board, their interpretation. But shall be reviewed annually. So annual, and I, I mean, the employees are reviewed annually, cost of living. But it says plus benefit package offered to full-time town employees. So that's why I'm thinking that I should have been placed in the group whose wage scale was, was reviewed this time. Because the town employees' wage scale was reviewed this time.
That's an interesting way to look at it. The way I was reading that, I was reading it that, um, you know, reviewed annually because some things change. Insurance changes, you guys know. Dental insurance and health insurance goes up and down and changes. So I was thinking more of those changes um, that were reviewed annually, not so much the pay. I know I've been here quite a while now. This is the first time we've tried to look at all departments pays. We've looked at some specific ones before that were squeaking at the time. But never have we gone through all of them like that. Um, may have somebody else.
I know, but I'm gonna wait, wait a second. Um, I'm just surprised that you're coming in this year and asking for money this year. We even worked how many years in doing this? Never asked for an annual review, other than that cost of living review that we do every year?
Because I was respected the fact that none of the, well, I don't know what they asked for. And I didn't feel it was fair for me to come in and say, I want more than everybody. I'm just saying, if you're doing it for employees now, please consider to include me in that package. Because since the town voted to make this position full-time, I've been included in that package. You'd be surprised at how many people have no idea that I'm elected. Um, they think of me as an employee. It's, you know that I'm elected because you're elected and you're learning more and more about the elected positions and, and the responsibilities surrounding them. But the general public really doesn't understand that. And I, you know, are they thinking, I just, I don't know how they think. I know they don't know.
I think in this particular town, it is a little mixed because they did vote to give you benefits. So this, this town in particular has been very mixed down. You know, when we look at this wage scale for these other towns, I'm not sure that the other town clerks on the smaller towns get all the benefits that, you know, you do as well. So in here, we're just looking at the wage study. But in looking at this wage study, on this page here, with the town, we have at least those eight towns, you're second to the highest on it.
Right. And once again, I said that is, and that, that is a tool, but it's not a tool.
It is a control. We don't know how long they've been there, any of them.
Yeah, how long they've been there. And I, and I can tell you that as the older clerks are leaving and newer clerks are coming in, newer clerks aren't staying. And I didn't realize how important it was here at town to have consistency in the town clerk.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Until I started talking about the fact that I was considering retiring, you can't leave. You're the only person that's been here since I moved into town twenty years ago. You get that consistency. And I think as these older clerks, not older like, you know, agent, but these clerks, the longtime clerks are retiring, they're the people who, the governing body of the town, if they continue to keep that, that wage scale, you see in the municipal association, if they continue to keep those wages so low, they're not gonna be able to retain clerks. It takes years for a clerk.
You know, there's a solution, there's a great solution to that too.
What is that?
If you became an employee of the town rather than an elected official, that way you'd be included in all benefits, all K-rates, everything we do for the town would be something different than being elected official.
It would be, but I couldn't be an employee as a clerk because by state law, the clerk is elected.
Is that, I thought some, no, no, it's not across all, some, in some municipalities.
Cities are appointed, town clerks are elected, and I can go back and grab the statute and order you.
First one.
I've done that for a little bit. Yes. City clerks are appointed, town clerks are elected.
I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, Linda, with them, the times that, uh, we had decided to do it um, like yours, it'd be up next year.
I'm just asking.
Because that's on the plan.
Consider doing right now and then.
How would we feel, we, since as an elected official, we didn't even do a review this year?
For?
For, is it not for, what, for election?
Who was it? When we got the treasurer, uh, who else?
The treasurer of the town, so she did, she only got four percent. And then the tax collector doesn't come up for that. Well, she ran this year, but we didn't review it.
Right. The board of selectmen were done this previous year, so they're not up. We did that again. We didn't do the town clerk and we didn't do the tax collector. We did the board of assessors because they're up. And we did the road agent that sees up, and we did the treasurer. So, and that was with your input too.
So I guess what I'm saying is, you reviewed, you, you did the wage scales, which I applaud you for doing. There were not many selectmen who would really take a good hard look at what all of their employees are doing. You did it for equity purposes. The wording in the article from two thousand and seven shall be reviewed annually for equity purposes. I'm just asking to be treated equally. That's all I'm asking for.
But you're an elected official, we're treating you like an elected official. However, we will review your salary every year. I agree with you. Because we'll at least make sure you get the cost of living raised to be, make sure you're trying to keep up with inflation, even though it won't be perfect. It will never be perfect. But we won't keep you with a cost of living range. And we will review wages as we have decided before in the year of election.
I'm sorry the article didn't say that the town will give the town clerk every single thing the employees get, and I guess that's where it's gray. But I did have to bring it up. That's what the article says.
And you know, I will say one thing, Linda, every department head that wants an adjustment has to bring it up. So don't feel bad about bringing it up. Because that's part of your job as a department head and, and for yourself, so.
And then.
In this life, if somebody doesn't ask for a raise, they typically don't get one, so it's good to.
I, I've never asked the board to step out of the wage scale for me. I've asked for my.
And even the, even the four percent, it's not a crazy.
Linda, ask for.
It's, it's not that, uh, I'm gonna say no to the, your, the times for their review, for the full review of your position. Position, not you personally, but your position will be next year, will be, um, the year of election. It won't be until then.
Is the board gonna find us?
No, we'll reveal it when we, uh, we do a top to bottom review of the wages.
So these are just, uh, presentations to start with. So we still have time.
Well, I'm, I'm going for the record now that I'm not supporting what you're asking, okay?
I gathered that. It's calling me psychic.
The thing is, I think, I gotta be fair to all elected officials, not just, I can't single you out singly.
I could ask Leanne one question. Did the treasurer stay flat just in the, uh, cost of living?
Just the cost of living. Cause when we did the wage study, she was second to the top. So the board decided that she was already, if she were second to the bottom, then you would have looked at that option that we reviewed when we looked at the road agents hourly.
And, and for the public here, what we tried to do, we looked at similar sized towns. As I said before, we don't wanna be the top paying municipality town paying top wages. But we don't wanna be the very bottom, because we can't maintain a workforce that way. We, our goal was to shoot somewhere in the middle. And it didn't have to be perfect in the middle, but it wanted to be in the middle to be competitive. And that was our goal. And that's what was our goal, reviewing positions across all the wage positions in town and the elected officials who are for election this year, following a procedure. It has never been done before in my history here. And I've been here with David, that we, six, seventy years. Yeah. And so, uh, it was a process that we started to be fair and to retain a good workforce to support the citizens of this town. And it will be reviewed, uh, but at an appropriate time. That's all I'm gonna say. Okay. But thank you for your presentation. I agree with Dave. The thing is, there's no harm in asking.
And I think the dollar mark you're asking for the four percent is, is, it's right in line because, you know, looking at the length of time you've been here and considering some other factors.
Dave, you can't consider length of time. I think you're out of order by saying that.
You can't, but I can look at whatever I want.
Well, then, the thing is, uh, Dave, then we should be asking, since I'm on a second term, or really third term, that we should have tenure terms, have raises for repeat terms? It doesn't do that. It doesn't do that. You don't work it that way. Election, as previous selectmen have said to me, election is from day of election to the end of term of the office and it starts again. And that's.
I'm just looking.
That's an act of, that's an act of my secretary of state.
Our pay, our pay is completely different.
No.
To hers, our pay is like basically bare nothing to.
That's a fair position.
Ours is like, doesn't even pay for my coffee bill.
But that, that assumption was an interpretation by the secretary of state, the four.
And technically, term ends five P M. for Friday following the election.
Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all you have for us?
I have one, I have one comment from the public, Leo.
Yeah, I just, uh, I don't wanna be a devil's advocate here.
Sure.
Um, I think that the wage scale is really not part of, uh, compensation packages, as, as, what she's talking about. You know, you get insurances and, and, uh, and you get, uh, other, uh.
Yeah, but I, I think we're missing words. Compensation can be considered, dollars can be considered compensation.
Well, yeah, but I, I think we were gonna talk, um, you're working on the employees', uh,
Wages.
Rages. It's a little different. It's not really, uh, uh, compensation. You're talking, you know, you're talking about.
The benefit.
The benefits package, yeah. Because it's really not a benefit that you're giving them. You're giving them a raise that they deserve. It's not a benefit. A benefit is like I said, insurance, you know, pension plan, things like that, you know?
Yeah, but like she did point out though, um, you know, we're looking at these things for the regular employees that we have here, not elected officials that aren't this year, but we're looking at them as a group this one year. We're hopefully not gonna be looking at this every year for these.
No, no, I understand that.
That's never been done before.
No, I understand that.
And the thing is, in the past, we've done it piecemealing. Piecemeal doesn't work because the thing is, when we do a piecemeal, one employee gets a good raise and no one.
And that's my point. You're doing it for the employees per year. And so, which you didn't increase their benefits by any means. You just gave them a raise, a new raise. That's what you did. So, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to take on you by any means. That's all my point, you know? It's just that I don't see that those two are the same.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on.
We have put library.
Say again?
Libraries.
Yes, absolutely. We're gonna do a switcheroo?
Yeah.
Mary.
Thank you. Thank you for switching.
Linda, I have one more question for you.
You did, yes.
Are we gonna leave your budget as proposed?
It's, no, it will be adjusted if we, if we do decide that.
Well, that's what I'm asking, Linda. She's a department head.
I'm leaving that budget as I presented.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you have some more?
I, um, we were just talking back there and I had to make a, make a real adjustment pencil on the budget sheet, so it doesn't. We'll, we'll talk about it. Late breaking news. So we, we've had a different year, but we're, we're standing.
I wanna say, I wanna, before you start, I wanna say thank you. Thing is, you have put up with the construction. The library trustees have been supportive. The public has been supportive. And I think the public appreciates everything you've done, Mary, to make sure that we stay somewhat functional. So my hat's off to the, uh, to the library trustees and especially you.
I appreciate that. It's been a year. We're, we're doing it. We're getting through. It's like, no. It's, we made it up as we went along.
And we, and the thing is, the key word I wanted to throw out there, you've been so flexible. And I think as we appreciate, I appreciate it. And I think as, uh, members of the public have appreciated.
Thank you.
And so, thank you. And to the trustees who've supported you, thank you too.
We, we did pretty well. We, we're continuing to do well. This picture might be a bit of a challenge here as we go through the, the library part of this construction part. But I, I gotta say, we planned out an awful lot of books. And we've lent out a lot of books to the other New Hampshire libraries who want our stuff. We, we've done an awful lot of programming, um, virtual programs, outside programs, sort of happen, app out programs. Um.
You started on your, um, budget page, remember you started?
Yeah, we did some very, very, uh.
For a year?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So we, our budget is essentially level funded with slight increases in the staff wage and the benefit line. You know, for, to offset the, um, the cost of the health benefit increase of eleven and a half percent, eleven point seven percent. And then the four percent raise.
So it's eleven percent plus four percent?
The eleven percent is just for the health insurance?
Oh.
The four percent is on the salary.
Okay.
Do we imagine what we give to the town?
Yes.
Okay.
That's great.
We also.
That makes it clearer.
We also, um, sorry, we also request a slight increase in our programming line. Um, and also the facilities line in anticipation of an increase in program options using the upstairs space. And, um, you know, our patrons have been patiently waiting for that for sure.
Why, why, why is it a cost more to use the upstairs?
Not only is it gonna cost more, we're gonna offer more programs.
Ah, okay, great.
Yes. And then the, the facility slide, I wanted to add a little bit more because when the dust settles, I think we're gonna need a few more things. Um, I'd like to finish the paint job.
Paint jobs and stuff like that?
Well, the rest of it. I think, um, it's kind of in flux right now.
And she talked about a little additional lighting maybe too, or gas blocks.
Yeah, yeah, we, um.
So that's more, that facilities line is your maintenance line?
How many?
Is that facility line your maintenance line budget?
Yes, maintenance, maintenance, yeah.
I'd like to share that, the thing is, I wanna make sure that, um, if that's for the inside, it's fine. But the thing is, we, we may incorporate that money put a placeholder in our facilities, but in our line for maintenance.
Okay.
And the thing is, uh, because I know for a fact that there's gonna be some things that, oh, we wish we could have had this done. Or this, this fixture is gone. Um, and we're finding little things that our maintenance line is gonna have to take up. So, uh, it's gonna, may, we may leave it there, but we may end up supplementing that with our own facilities line.
The, the other thing that I've asked, the other thing that we're really concerned about is security. Um, whether it be, what do you think, um, we got, we have a quote from Pro Technologies for, um,
One nine hundred?
Yeah, it's twenty-two hundred for an N V R.
N V R?
Yeah, a main, which is the main brain of the camera system.
Okay.
Um, a skyhawk, it's a, it's, they're not eyeballs, but eyeball cameras. And we need a monitor positioned, you know, behind my desk. So I can see who's coming in.
Okay.
So I can see the outside door.
We, we. Do you have this seen on your computer?
Yeah. We, we, we're lined without the ender.
That's also the same line, facilities.
Okay, I, I can understand that. Okay, great.
Yes. So I think as the dust settles here.
There's gonna be some additions gonna be needed, sure.
I think so. For our se- security, for our safety, now in going forward into the future. For our se- security, for our safety, now in going forward into the future, we don't know, well, this year will be different too. This, this next year will be different because increasing number of people will be using that.
And I, I anticipate, uh, it's going to be something that you're going to open the door one day. You're going to say, we should have the money to fix that. You're going to need that. I'm with you. But again, remember that I think that amount you're asking is fine, but that is not exclusive to you in a sense that we're going to augment, we're going to augment you as needed. Because we, as a town, the selectmen responsible for that building too. So don't feel like you're going to be left alone.
Chris brought up a point up the other day when I talked to Chief Vermaelen. Having a security system might bring down insurance a bit.
Now, we've updated it before.
No, no.
That and sprinkler systems, it'll give you a discount.
Well.
I'll check it again, but I think the last number.
Yeah, homeowners, I knew, but that's about all.
Thank the sprinkler, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Okay, enough. Go ahead, Mary, let's continue.
We'll take that out of the budget then.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, that's, that, that was it. Uh, just, that was it really. Um, we're happy, we're level funded. I think we'll be able to go forth and do good work. Um.
Can I ask a question? The, uh, the adjustment on the eighty thousand, do I have to increase the town's portion a thousand?
Like I said, I, I did that just five minutes before I passed it out.
That's from, yes. So I'll increase, so the only line that the town is responsible for is halfway down. Town of Dunbarton, in twenty twenty-two, we budgeted one oh nine two seventy eight twenty-one. They were asking for one eighteen seven forty-eight. That's our contribution and we're going to increase that by one thousand, so.
And that number could change because we don't know when our online labs and funds is going to be yet.
Right, and once you get that in.
Right. So we'll have to make adjustments for that.
Okay, so and with that, original number is nine thousand four sixty-nine and change. So now we'll increase that to ten thousand four sixty-nine. And that could be surplus.
And I want to say thank you for the library trustees for being vigilant and helping us do this. And I think the budget, the locals and I have no issues with the budget. But I, I think it's just remember, as I said before, I want to reiterate, there are going to be things that we didn't cover that we should have, could have, should have, would have done with the construction, new construction. And we're going to be prepared as a board to make sure that building is operational. Right now, I just want to put for the record, we have found the long pole in the tent. You understand what that term means? It's the, uh, the thing that's going to delay us opening that building up for the public. The elevator, for the second floor I'm talking about, the elevator require, we're going to have it all pristine lariat ago, but we're going to miss, we're going to be missing one little thing. It's called a certificate of operation gi- given by the state. And we are fighting to make sure we're in the queue because it takes several months. And that's going to be a holding, a holdup factor for us.
Will that hold up the library?
No. It will hold this city upstairs.
Correct. Okay, yeah.
But the thing is, uh, but everyone's anticipating, we want to get to the second floor for meetings for what have you. Um, but that's, that's the thing that we found late in the game. And we can't get an inspection until we have it ready. And then we have to get in the queue. And then, then we found that we're pulling our hair out and saying, ah, another delay, another delay. And then on top of that, just to get the, 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 the elevator fixed, we're waiting on electrical panel. And with all the COVID shortages, the electrical panel is like, Dave, Dave keeps telling me.
Five more weeks.
Five more weeks, five more weeks.
Every time they tell us five weeks, it seems to be another five.
Yeah, so the thing is, I anticipate that the upstairs will be almost finished with a few little things to be fini- I mean, finalized, but the downstairs will be open before you.
I asked a simple question because it's a four hundred A panel. Why don't they buy two, two hundred A panels and put them in? And the simple answer I got back was that building panel was designed by electrical engineer and that's a commercial rated panel with higher rated breakers. So that was the long and short of asking them to, uh, there's only certain companies that make those heavy duty panels and all of them seem to have the same shortages going on right now.
So I, I want to make sure you all understand that we're working diligently with the contractor. But the thing is, uh, our hands are tied.
I live in the day. I just want another two occupancy permits that, that have to be.
Only one, that little, little that's going to go on the stage does not require state approval.
Okay. But the build out itself needs a certificate of.
Only for that elevator.
Oh.
Well, that's a certificate of operation. I think what Mary's referring to is, do you have to also get a certificate?
No, no, no.
No, our building department is taking.
So you, there'll be an entryway to your, to your lower half. It says the upper half will be blocked off.
Right, and, yeah.
So to keep everybody while we're on the library, flooring is getting installed Monday. They moved it off from this week because they had to temporarily wire the heaters to work and they're going to get it up to temp. So the floor was originally scheduled for Tuesday of this week. It's now starting there next week. All the door hardware, except for a couple of cylinders are in. And they're installing some of that. The new front doors have a coat of polyom or zire or whatever they're using on the exterior of those doors. And Mary's room, um, all the tile is in on Mary's floor getting ready to be installed.
Right there. Treads too.
But you guys have been more than gracious and it, it does go a long ways. It takes a lot of pressure off us if we were hearing feedback from you guys, you know, we're just kind of the in-between people, but it has really helped. And, um, you know what else I like is when I read your newsletters. It's like when Chris sends out, we can read in a few minutes, see what their department's been doing, the different things they're doing through the town. And it's very easy to follow for the townspeople as well as us.
The public, the public appreciates the updates.
I like the newsletter.
And your newsletter and giving the construction updates, I usually look at them and read them and giggle a little bit. They, they really are helping the public.
No sugar coating anything.
Yeah. But it's helping the public understand it without us having to do it on our own. So it's, uh, it's been a benefit to us.
Yeah. Because, you know, one of these days they're going to say, what, when is that going to be finished? And election's going to come up. And the thing is, I've, I've got this bad feeling that voters are going to look at me and say, why isn't finished? And it's going to be election day or the time meeting day.
Before then.
Yeah, that's what he says, but I'm over, I'm over a prank man. I'm practical here. It's going to be, uh, I, I'm looking at one April. That's my, that's my target. It's got to be open by one April.
Our programs are scheduled virtually until through the end of February. And then I'll just keep adding on.
Okay. Well, I think is, again, it's the shortage, I think we're, we're on a glide path and we're, we're making progress. Every, every week we make, we make a progress.
And then once that flooring is put in there, Mary, I think that, uh, your entryway, I don't think there's any issues with your entryway there, so.
Now, the upstairs is going to be, uh, those floors are going to be, be finished also.
The floors are there some drywall, upstairs have been worked, we've done, but I think, uh, your entryway, I'm hoping to be able to fairly soon.
Does that mean that the library can then open?
Yes, the lower half, yeah.
I think when we do that, we need to meet with you physically there and say, all right, we don't have any obstacles.
Got the roof.
You know, lighting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Now, there was a walk, a walkthrough maybe to make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, what about, sorry, what about the outside lights? Dave, um, they're in place, but there's no, still no electricity to them. That's.
That's part of that whole entire panel. They, they powered up the elevator so that they could operate that and check that all out. And they powered up the Mitsubishi splits so they could heat. And other than those two items, the rest of that stuff, they're waiting for that panel, so.
So we have to wait for those lights?
Yeah, we do, we.
Yeah.
We may have to adjust our hours daily.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks, I'm with you. You know, we're around flexible. That's the key word. And you've been, you all been, you've been, the library.
So we could either, we could either just continue like we're doing till we get the panel in or, you know, do some flex flowers. If it was summertime, there'd be plenty of light there, you know, it's not that.
We're doing now, you know, and then, when does the time change?
Time change?
So this is next Wednesday.
Wednesday is Thursday.
So we're going ready to summer, so.
Days will begin longer.
Yes.
As we have a big snowstorm.
And as far as snow removal, um, the transfer station employees will be working with you there.
Yep, there's bags, there are bags of.
Yeah, just to drop them up there.
You just, if you see Woody and his crew, just to make sure you direct them where you'd like to have it placed. I think inside the door.
In the, in the basement door.
Five or six bags in it.
Yeah, but some of, they can be placed along, going down that entry. They don't, they're not going to open all five at once, just one bag at a time needs to be at the top.
Where, which entry?
The basement entry.
The bulkhead?
Yeah.
Put it down in the bulkhead?
Right on the side, you know, you can just stand the bags up like they are now.
Outside.
Inside.
Oh, inside, okay.
Where you go into the basement because of the concrete and then.
I didn't have a key to that door, so.
So I'm the electrical side.
I know. Maybe Bobby can do that.
Bobby can do it or, or Woody can do it tomorrow because he's going to be there tomorrow.
Yeah. For sure.
I'm, I've expected him to be there a couple of times clearing that open thing.
Yeah, you're ready. You did it last time. We had a little testing, you thought it went very well and it was a little bit easier than you expected.
The painting, paint job is new, right? So there's still oil coming up out of that asphalt.
Yeah.
Or whatever, bitumious material. It's slick. It's very slick.
You want us to go back to dirt?
Just F I R. That is very slick.
They've got to put a lot of dirt on top, I think.
Okay, well, I would say thank you to the library and the library, to the library director and the trustees. Thank you. The board have a great year.
Sorry, Bobby.
Oh, yeah. That's me.
Oh, yeah.
Grab the gravel walkways. We're running low. I believe the, uh, the infamous police department is going to drive us. Did Donna talk to you this weekend?
Yes, so we got, you know, the.
Thank you.
This is this package, right? So official.
How much are you reporting last?
It's all in the budget, you'll see.
Well, thank you for your time. Um, so I guess I'll, I'll just get right into it. So our discretionary contractual budget line increases came to, uh, five thousand and thirteen dollars. However, the savings from our body more camera line because of that grant, which was thirty-six forty, shows us an overall net increase of only thirteen hundred seventy-three dollars for all of my discretionary contractual budget line, uh, increases. So I was trying to keep that flat as I talked to the board about because we obviously have some personnel increases because of the wage adjustments, the four percent COLA. And then, as I'm sure the board remembers, our office administrator position was only partially funded in twenty twenty-two. Um, I believe it was some, sometime in May. So this budget also includes, uh, funding that for a full calendar year. So a known budget increase in that regard. So.
Does the budget, does the, uh, personal line include the two offices which you have currently?
Yes, I'm going to go, I'm going to go over all that. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so personal costs covering a total of ten positions, um, five full-time, five part-time, uh, increased by fifty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-six as a result of all the wage adjustments, the four percent COLA and the known budget increase of funding our part-time office admin position for the full calendar year of twenty twenty-three. And just funding that alone for the full year was an increase of nineteen thousand five ten. And that, again, includes all the wage adjustments and the four percent COLA. Um, so I just, I'll go through the individual budget line. So on page two, uh, crime control full-time, that went up twenty-seven seven two nine. Again, that's wage adjustments for five full-time positions plus the four percent COLA. You'll see down at the bottom, I have patrol vacancy one and patrol vacancy two. Those are really a moving target. Um, what I did is I budgeted for step one patrol for those. And I want to leave a little bit of a buffer because if I have a certified officer down the road, let's say in the springtime, who has a lot of experience that wants to come on board, that money will be there, uh, to pay in commensurate with the new step increases. The reality is, um, I'm probably going to have a surplus from this specific line at the end of the year. Um, we are trying to actively recruit right now, but that's going to take some time. But I, again, I wanted to leave a buffer because if we do find someone certified, we need to be able to pay them commensurate.
So you decided not to follow selectmen's, uh, recommendation?
Oh, just give everyone giant orders?
Yeah.
Uh, so that's, uh, that's full-time crime control. Um, on the next page, uh, overtime, that increased a little bit, fifteen thirty-five. Um, obviously with the wage adjustments and the COLA, hourly rates go up, therefore overtime rates go up. So I had to account for that. Holiday pay went up nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, same, same ration behind that new wage increases and the four percent COLA. Part-time, uh, went up, uh, four thousand one hundred and fifteen as a result of the wage adjustments and the four percent COLA. There's no change in the hours. Uh, I kept the hours the same. And I did put a little note with regards to train, even though we've seen a reduction in our part-time staff, there's actually an increase in mandated training hours, uh, going up again in twenty twenty-three. So I wanted to leave those hours in there.
Midday by the state?
That's correct, by police standards of training. Um, which is a good thing and training's always a good thing. Uh, part-time office administrator, that went up nineteen thousand five hundred and ten. Again, that includes the wage adjustment, four percent COLA and the known budget increase of budgeting that for the entire calendar year. Yeah. Uh, but I did put in just for cost comparison, in two thousand twenty, when that position was a part-time detective position, as the board remembers, it was forty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-three. So fast forward three years, it's still less than it was. It, it's now less than it was three years ago. Um, supplies level funded, training level funded. Prosecution went up two hundred and twenty hours. Conference City Prosecutor's Office, we did a really, really good bang for our buck. It's a very cost-effective way to get prosecution services. We've been with them for over two decades.
It's contractual, is that, I mean, a contract will be put out for them?
Nope, it's, it's, uh, it's a, um, recurring, revolving contract, yeah. So once we sign it, it's basically in effect until it's terminated.
Okay.
So that's two hundred and twenty dollars of an increase. Computer hardware is level funded. Gasoline, that's really, that's a tough one, as the board knows, that's really a moving target. Uh, I increased that by a thousand, which will bring us closer to our twenty twenty-two projected fuel expenditures.
When, what was the twenty twenty-two?
I got, I got the budget report today. I think we're, I think we're about five or six hundred dollars over. Uh, that doesn't include December's expenditures. So we'll probably be in like the fifteen hundred dollar range over.
So thirteen hundreds. Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand will basically be what we spent this year.
Is it too small?
I, it, it may be. It's, it's so hard to know with.
No, that's dropping.
Gas is dropping, yeah.
Yeah, it's starting to go down a little bit. I don't know how long.
Till they just build a bunch in the river.
So that's, that's always really a moving target.
Is hay included in this too?
It is not included. It's going to cost, it's going to cost more. Uh, dispatch, that's contractual, that's a three-year contract. Uh, I believe we're coming into year two. That's a eleven hundred dollar increase. Again, we.
When does that contract end?
Uh, that contract ends, I believe, in twenty twenty-five. Because I know we just re-upped that.
Correct.
We really did a great bang for our buck with Goffstown. It's still cheaper than we were paying another community ten years ago. We really did a great bang for our buck with Goffstown, it's still cheaper than we were paying another community ten years ago, um, so.
Are you getting any problems from Goffstown's perspective?
They, they provide a great service.
Yeah, they're doing all new towers too.
Yeah, they are, yeah, the radio.
I think over here, it's really gonna help.
And, and just to, uh, to give the board a quick update on that, um, I did a site walk, uh, with some members of Goffstown PD, Goffstown Fire, the radio. Um, contracting company, and, uh, work is gonna start on Powell Lane sometime in January. But, right now, we don't have any radio infrastructure in Dunbar, and we have a small repeater at the transfer station, which helps our. North-end communications get back to Unco Munich and then to dispatch. Powell Lane is gonna be a game changer for us, the equipment that Goffstown is putting on that tower. Um, should cover a good chunk of town, Mills Hill is always a geographic barrier because it's such a steep drop. So once you come down into the valley, specifically like Tenny Hill area, we have a lot of death spots down there. Um, but I think with Powell Lane is really gonna improve our radio communications.
And the one over on Blackbrook will help that a little.
Absolutely, yeah, at the fire station, for sure, for sure, yeah, so, staying with Goffstown, I, I would recommend it a hundred percent. But with, with this radio project they're doing, it's really gonna improve our communications even more. Um, computer software, I increased that by five hundred, um, we set up our office administrator, uh, with Adobe PDF redaction software. So when we get ninety-one A requests, we obviously have to redact stuff. And what we used to do is we would use a Sharpie, make a copy, it, it was just extremely labor-intensive, we know what I'm talking about. Um, so, we have Adobe now on my computer, the sergeant's computer, and our office administrator's computer, we all help out with ninety-one A requests, so. Um, that's to get her, um, software recurring, we did pay for it this year because we needed it. Um, and then we have a very small budget increase in our scheduling software, um, I believe it increased by like a hundred and thirty dollars, something like that. Still, it's still under five hundred bucks a year for now, which is very good. Network posting, uh, that went up fourteen twenty, um, that's another contractual service. Um, we're actually gonna be moving to an in-house server, uh, because our vendor-certified computer solutions, they're moving to a new cloud-based software. Called Azure, uh, it's a Microsoft, uh, platform, and if we had gone that route through them, it would have been, uh, approximately a three thousand dollar increase. So we're able to do a little bit of cost savings, uh, by having our own onsite leased server through Certified, um, they'll still maintain it, they'll set it up and everything.
Building burns down, you should have a backup.
So we're gonna have, we're still gonna have remote off-site backup, yeah, yeah. Uh, but that was the cheaper of the two options, and quite honestly, I think provides us a little bit more security, um, because our stuff will be up in the cloud, so to speak. Um, IMC, that's contractual as well, that was a three hundred and seventy dollar increase, that's the nuts and bolts of our records management system. Um, all of our records dating back to two thousand three, when we implemented this software, is in, in what's called IMC. Telephone went up four hundred, um, that's our automated vehicle locator, cell phones, and I did issue. Work cell phones to all of our full-time staff this year, uh, because I do not want officers using their personal phones for work-related matters when they're on duty. It can really open up a can of worms, and it also logistically works really well, if they're at a scene, um, they can use their cellphone to take pictures and things of that nature. So we've actually saved money, um, because we're not having to buy digital cameras, um, most of the time, officers can just use their, their cell phones.
Are you buying, are you buying through our contract?
Yes, yes, we, we have a, we have a Verizon, uh, state bid contract, and, uh, we actually had some older iPhones kicking around, so we just reactivated those, so. We're able to do it on the cheap, aside from the monthly guy cutting costs. Um, vehicle maintenance, I kept that level funded, department equipment is level funded, fees and services is level funded. Fees and services includes a lot, as you can see, um, on page seven at the top. Um, really took a look at some of our databases that we were paying for, and what we need, what we don't need, some of the new databases we've signed onto, um. Were able to access some of the old databases we were paying for, um, so instead of basically paying double, um, I was able to reallocate. Some of that money, and there's a couple initiatives in there, one of the big ones is, um, uh, wellness consultations. Which is providing our staff the ability to sit down with a mental health clinician that specializes in first responders, they can sit down with her annually. Um, as kind of a, a wellness check-in.
Do you require it then?
It's not required, it's strongly suggested.
You, you, you can require it.
Yeah, I, I'm not quite there at the point of requiring, there's a lot of agencies that are hopping on board and doing this initiative to take care of their people. Um, and we're still, it's in its, it's in its infancy stages, um, I can say that there has been a lot of interest, and I kinda wanna see.
How it goes.
So they get one visit per calendar year, um, and we were able to do that with no net increase because we canceled out.
I wouldn't require it, that one visit might open a can of worms or anything.
No, but I, I want, I want you to monitor it, use through the year, in a sense that if no one uses it, that's maybe.
For sure, the, the good part is we only pay when they actually go, there's not a, there's not a, a flat fee contract we pay, it's, it's only if they actually go.
Especially if, you know, if you had an incident in town where someone wanted to talk down.
Exactly, exactly, and this isn't unique to Dunbar, there's a lot of agencies that are starting to do this, uh, police suicide is through the roof. Um, and, you know, even here in New Hampshire, it's, it's something that unfortunately happens, um, fairly regularly. So, we're trying to be proactive and just make sure that our, our guys and gals are taken care of. Um, radio repair is, uh, level funded, I did put a quick note in here, our membership in the Central New Hampshire SOU has paid dividends. Uh, they gave us new-to-us portable radios, uh, and their approximate value each of four thousand dollars, they gave us for them. Um, Sergeant Tyler's car was having a radio problem, the SOU Radiotech came out, diagnosed it and fixed it at no extra cost. If we had called a vendor to come out and do that, it probably would have been at least five hundred dollars, um, so we're, we're really lucky.
What did you spend on, the only thing missing is what was, you know, what was budgeted?
Yeah.
What was expended in that line last year?
So we, we spent that line, so typically what that line covers is, um, batteries. So the batteries that go on our portable radios, the, the factory batteries are approximately a hundred and thirty dollars each, so that a thousand dollars gets eaten up pretty quick. Um, and then chargers as well, and I'm a huge fan of having extra batteries, our officers work long shifts, and I'm making sure that they have enough batteries to get them through a long, more extended shift. Um, and obviously as batteries get older, we have to replace them.
You love to pay as long as you're anxious.
Okay. Body worn cameras, uh, that's zeroed out, uh, because of the grant, and again, that zero out essentially covers all of my contractual discretionary budget line increases.
Done a question.
Sure.
Mandatory or not mandatory?
So, well, all of our full-time staff will be wearing it.
Mandatory?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there is an abstract, the amount of hours that our part-time officers work versus the cost of the body cameras. It just, fiscally, it didn't make sense for me to, to get more cameras.
I'm just saying, weekend, you got a part-time worker, and you go to a contentious operation.
That's right, because every time they do that, they're gonna call one of these guys.
I just wanna make sure that, it's, is it available to them if they need it?
So, for example, Officer Gorman, who works every Friday night, he's with another officer that has a camera.
Perfect.
We, we're making sure that our guys are covered, um, it's just, they work so little that, to outfit them with a camera.
I understood, but the thing is, it's a, it's a matter of protecting your staff.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Because you, we've had incidents before where he said, she said, and the camera told a different story.
That's right, a hundred and ten percent. Um, so that grant really, really saved us some money, and I was able to take those savings.
And kudos to you for, for applying for it.
Well, thank you, thank you, we got lucky, we're waiting on a deployment date, Motorola is supposed to be coming and setting those up, like, hopefully before the end of the year.
And those have, they fit their backup and all that kinda stuff.
Yes, yeah, that's the, uh, you put it in the dock, hit upload and save order rules, cloud-based system, you can tag what kind of video it is, it's all self. Sufficient, instead of officers having to plug in the camera and tab all this stuff, obviously, it takes forever. Uh, and then uniforms is my last line, that is also another one.
Your uniform last year was, you used it all or?
Yeah, just about, yeah, so this, the last page is, uh, from the twenty-ninth of November, we've done a little more spending sense though. But, uh, that line will essentially be spent out, I try to wait on some of these lines on the end of the year, just because we usually have surprises that happen.
Are you aware of the town administrator's, uh, direction, uh, for December?
Yes, yes, yep, I received that.
Are you gonna be looking by?
Yes, no, no Amazon spending spree is, uh, happening.
Okay, uh, good reason, last, the last three years, we've had a tough time reconciling. There's people that would drop something December thirty-first, and I'm not saying names, but you came from something December thirty-first and expect the town office to reconcile a budget.
Right, understand.
And then we get nailed when they, when they get reviewed, like, where are these expenses coming from? A lot of these people decided to spend midnight on December thirty-first.
Yeah.
And, okay, I, I, I thank you for.
Absolutely, yeah, I will buy by.
And there'll be exceptions.
Sure, if there's an emergency.
If it's an emergency, you just coordinate it and make sure you get the receipts.
Absolutely. Um, so that's the long and short of my budget, I know that the personnel looks like a huge jump, but in reality, you know, it, it covers ten positions. Uh, both full-time and part-time positions, and allocates for a full year of funding for our office administrative position, um, so.
And the thing is, by, you, you're budgeting the whole year for those police officers, so what you're banking?
I am, yeah, and then, again, the reason being, I budgeted step one, but I could have an officer come in that's eligible for step six, and I wanna make sure that that one is there. To, to pay them commensurate with their experience.
By, you're banking something initially on if you don't fill it.
Right, and, and I strongly suspect that, you know, it takes us a long time, as the board knows, to hire, we're gonna have a, a fairly sizable surplus, I would suspect. Barring any surprises in twenty twenty-three, I don't wanna jinx myself, but, um, gasoline.
Gasoline.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, gasoline could certainly be a problem.
Are you, uh?
Okay, well, your budget's basically level, ten questions.
I was just looking at your budget and actual, your computer hardware, you spent, what was spent for seven hundred? I was just looking at that, is that?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be okay?
It, it will be, yeah, yeah, I know that, um, I would have to look specifically what pushed us over, I do know that we, we had some, um.
You probably got another system with office administrators.
Yes, that, that was one of it, uh, we, we bought a new Dell computer, and then we had to buy a lot of external, um, four-terabyte hard drives, and remember. They're expensive, yeah, so when we work in internet crimes against children case, um, the, the. The evidence is just astronomical, and we have to find a way to store that, so, um, those are really expensive. I found them on Amazon for one fifty, one seventy-five, somewhere in that ballpark, but we had to buy a lot of those at once because we were just getting hammered with these cases.
Yeah, if you're gonna use the same ones over and over, they, they fail fairly quickly.
Yeah, and we, if we have multiple cases, we have to use different storage devices for each case, so it, it adds up. Um, but I think we'll be okay in that regard.
Stay away from Seagate, I hate Seagate. Seagate, thank you.
Oh, yeah, 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 Toshiba's good.
Toshiba's good. Western Digital, sorry. Yeah, Seagate, oh my god, I had more failures than Seagate.
Sure, sure, and I, uh, I, I think the, the board's aware, but I'm, I'm not asking for a, a full-time call. I do have a proposal, and I apologize if I don't have it tonight for a vehicle, I have a way to do it on the cheap, like, a very, very.
This is gonna be via warrant?
Yes, via warrant, um, I was gonna try and get it done tonight, I apologize, I've just been completely out straight, um, so I'm trying to.
Finally, did we tell, you know, you know how we did one last year?
Mm-hmm.
And at the town meeting, and we had done one the year before, and we told people we're gonna try and do every other year.
Right.
That we had the emergency one we had to do last year.
Yeah, we're gonna tell them that, yeah. You got pictures of a car blown up?
No, pictures of the car.
That was the one we had to.
Okay, yeah, so, it, it's tough.
I wanna, I wanna, you know, I know we told every other year, but we budgeted that.
We're trying to get there.
Yeah, we're still trying to get there.
We, we are, so, basically the, and I, I have a proposal that I've been working on, and I know with these wage increases, it's, it's a big jump.
What way can you come to us, I guess?
Yeah, and, so I, I am working on that, I, like I said, I have a way to do it relatively inexpensively, um. The, the problem that we have is looking at the, the history of our fleet, I won't get into the minutia of it tonight, but. We skipped so many years that we just, it's.
It's coming to roost.
It's, it's coming to roost, and we saved money at the time, but we're paying for it now, and I'm trying to do it with the taxpayer in mind, I understand times are tight. Um, but at the same time, you know, one of our patrol vehicles now has a hundred and thirty thousand on it, and we're starting to see those mechanics.
Well, I view it as, as the one tool you need to operate.
Yeah, and I, and I, I, it, it pains me to have to ask again, because I, I feel like it's, it's kinda the same song every year, right? Um, and Dan's car, the, the O eight Taurus, we had to replace that, um, that, that was, that was just, yeah, that was, that was a rough car. So, I'll keep working on that, I'll defer to the board for, for your opinion and, and ultimately.
We'll give you guidance, but guess who's gonna go for, before the voters?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, I, I understand completely.
How was your other candidate coming that you were looking into?
I'll talk to you. Um, but yeah, so I'll work on that proposal, I'll send it to the board, and I'll comment on it all the time, and we can discuss that separately.
I'll see what you propose.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Um, as far as the surplus of the special duty revenue, I just got caught up with receipts.
Okay, I'm gonna.
General Reis still has four outstanding that we haven't included in that revenue.
Yeah.
But I'll be able to give you a final.
Just, okay, for the special duty, the special duty they do, some of the money goes back to the, uh, evolving fund to help support vehicles. And so that's one of the ways he's looking to offset it.
Yeah, there's a, there's, I have a lot of different ideas, different funding mechanisms and, and proposals to keep that cost down. One, one of the big ones is the vehicle that we'd be getting rid of, we can actually take the radio out of that, and the light bar, and a bunch of other equipment. So that brought the outfit cost, I think it was around tw- what would normally be about twenty-five grand for the radio and all the equipment, down to like eleven and change. So I'm, I'm really trying to be cognizant of, I know I'm coming back for another car, I feel terrible. But this is an opportunity to get, potentially get a replacement vehicle for a very small.
I, I would talk about history and the, the, um, I'm realistic history, that one car failed on you, went out, put you out of schedule.
Right, and, and it's really that, that, that whole thing really illustrates that with police cars, when you're hitting that one thirty, one forty mark on the odometer. It's a liability, it, it really is, and we saw that firsthand with the board.
The other thing, as you learned this year, of course, uh, call them out.
Yeah.
Um, for leftovers.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of waiting the year to receive it, if it goes through the warrant article, um, I'd call around before the warrant hit there, somewhere, and put a hold on. A, a hold on one till after the meeting or something, because sometimes they have one that didn't get picked up by the department for some reason.
Yeah, we did that this year, and I did, uh, I did reach out to that same entity, they sold. Uh, I think it was over two hundred twenty-two SUVs in Weston Park. In fact, when I was there, picking up our newest car that's being outfitted, it was an agency from Long Island, New York, on the phone with the sales rep. And framing hand-massed because they couldn't find a car anywhere, it, it's unbelievable, um, but in any rate, I will keep working on that. I wanna get it to the board so we can hash it out and see.
If you even budget one, we might not get it.
For a year. So the, the, and that's another thing I need to talk to the board about, but the, the place where we got our latest one, they will have cars on the lot at town meeting time. Uh, because I specifically asked, would we be waiting a year? And they said, no, we would have them of, immediately available, so that's another thing to, to have them. Yeah, right, right, so, I, I am trying to be cognizant of, of, uh, you know, everything that's going on economically, um, and try and find a good middle ground, and. Um, I'll keep working on that proposal, I'll send it to the board, and we can hash it out, and you know what, if we, as a collective group decide now is not the time, I totally respect that. I just wanna provide the information that we can discuss.
Well, I, I think, um. As you articulate your case to the voters, I think this is a little bit of an understanding, but the key is you have to be able to articulate that in a clear, unsable fashion.
The only thing I'm not ready to do is an electronic crew, I am not ready.
Oh, well, I mean, a, uh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
You didn't want the Mustang?
You don't wanna cycle it?
I'm on a skateboard.
I'll take a skateboard, you're like being in high school.
Coming down the hill, Mills Hill, good time.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the board's time, are there any questions about the?
No, I think you did a lot. Um, you stick around if you're.
I'm on my bunk.
Thank you for your time.
All right, let's, uh, go through the mailbox and take that gentleman.
He's actually, why don't you introduce your.
So, this is, uh, Helga Mushar, she's Dunbaran resident, and she wanted to come tonight to learn about the budget process. She's actually, uh, our representative to the Concord Regional Crime Line, um, and now the vice chair.
Vice chair.
Of the Concord Regional Crime Line, so she does a lot of advocacy, not to steal the thunder.
No, no, thank you.
For, uh, Concord Regional Crime Line, of which Dunbaran is a member, but also a lot of advocacy for our police department, so.
We're very happy to have that, that the quality of this.
Oh, I completely agree, a hundred times over.
You're the one starting the crime?
Yeah. I don't wanna see a mad.
Full employment upgrade.
Yeah, exactly, no, and I appreciate all that Chief from a lot has done with crime line too, and supporting what we're doing for the greater Concord region, so.
Because he's worked on budgets for so many years, he knows what we're looking for in Dunbar. He starts early in the process, you know, we've already seen a lot of these paperwork, that's why, we went through it kind of fast, he went through us. Twice, I think, with these numbers, as well as emailing it to all of us, so.
He's very diligent.
Yeah, so we've looked down on him, then gone back and forth, and he has championed the numbers.
But, but we still gotta give him some jazz.
Yeah, I know, well, yes, no, we've got, definitely keep him, keep him sharp, but no, he's, he's done amazing. And I'm glad that you guys, you know, with him being chief for one year and it's been two weeks, never mind.
True, but, really, thank you for your.
Don't spend your papers all in place. Disney and April.
Okay, um, let's go back to the top.
You have one more thing on your agenda.
One more thing on my agenda, okay. No, when he comes around, because you're, you're gonna talk about it, okay, very good. Uh, let's go through the mailbox real quick. Winnie, you got any mail, Winnie, he said the, uh, trash compact is running again, however, he said there's a, there's a problem with the, uh. Uh, can crusher came in damaged, I believe he said, he's working with the manufacturers.
It's minor damage, so.
Will they give us compensation for it or fix it?
I think one of the two is gonna be a lot of trouble.
Okay, if you can say on top of that, we, you know. The transfer station, uh, was, again, uh, clean as always over this week, I went down there, no problems. Um, remember that he, if he saw the email, he sent the notice out to, um, fourteenth, the whole departments, the twenty-fifth is a cutoff date. Uh, we really have to stick to that, a lot of people, uh, a, a department's like to wait to the last week, and I was giving a little jazz about that, but. I don't wanna wait until December thirty-first, and basically, on, we gotta have our accounting in order, okay? And if they do spend, uh, you sent another email, I'll get a reminder, you gonna send another reminder to the?
I can, yeah.
We'll just bunch that so we don't pay it.
Yeah, well, we have, we, we have done that.
We have had, uh, employees return merchandise when they purchased it.
After the fact?
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you for sending the email out, just reminder that the receipts are the important part too.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, there was an email from Citizen regarding snow removal on, uh, Kelsey Road, just, just read that. Uh, for the record, that has been passed on to the road agents.
You did?
Okay, hey. There's also an email from Shelley Westenberg regarding, uh.
There's a, also an email from Shelley Westenberg regarding, uh, we placed another tables, uh, we have some tables now at the uh, school, uh, we uh.
Jimmy, you? I would send your back a recommendation from Lean that we stay with at least the number of rectangular tables that we have now for voting.
Yeah.
If they want to add some route, well, that's kind of on their own if they want to do that, but.
Same number of.
Yeah, because we used all of those tables that folded at one time or another.
We found them.
Counting bells. Rectangular.
The rectangle are already, um, the round ones we have on beyond. And say thank you for, we are very grateful to the uh, the PTO for doing that. Because those are, we're talking about community use tables and what they, we noticed that over the years, we have the wooden tables, this is for the public. Some wooden tables in the, in our storage closet and two or three of them are beyond repair. And the, the other ones are shortly behind that. And so this, PTO was graciously offered to replace some of our wooden tables with the the new composite tables. And so it's with Lean.
Yeah.
Very good, okay. Uh, continuing on, um, email from uh, from the transportation manager requesting large purchases. Again, Dave, the same guidance. I I would ask him to rack and stack, prioritize those purchases, because we may not want to prove them all, but he's gonna execute that quickly.
The one reason he didn't like was, uh, he was waiting for the final price to come back on the compact to repair.
Gotcha.
So he'll know what's left in his maintenance budget. He does, he does know that.
Okay, I'm asking to work with Lean. Lean can help him prioritize it. And then the next week, we can, we're gonna have a very short meeting next week.
Some of his purchases might, they'll, um, they might not come in, but he'll be able to.
Come.
Come with the money for you.
Which is fine. And Lean's, it should be more than all the alcohol. Uh, we got one uh, thank you card from the welfare director uh, for the kind uh, uh, Christmas gift we gave out to our employees today. All right, I'm gonna open up for a public comment now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment earlier.
Um.
Well, you're a citizen, you have a. And this is a public comment where we open it up. And you're on the agenda next.
And I just want to thank the board on behalf of the police department for the gift cards. Uh, everyone was extremely thrilled, but thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And your other, your other uh, distributions went well?
Yes, publisher's clearinghouse day.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good.
They did, thank you.
All right, um, with that, I'd like to have someone make a motion to go in.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're gonna go around there.
Yeah, we'll go around there.
Um, I just want to let the board know we have a forecast of um, snow tomorrow. I currently only have one employee working from the office, other, um, the other individual's using up some of her leave time. I'm gonna be working remotely from home, so I am prepared to close the office, have access to the V M R and will post the signs tonight. And in the event it's just rain, she'll come in and take the signs down, so. I just don't want to put her in a position where she was off the road and, or here by herself.
This is um, Jomar.
Jomar, yeah, yeah. Um, so I will be prepared to close in the event the st- the weather is not good for driving.
Reemphasize to the, to the board members, how do, how do we pay on snow days?
We have, uh, when it's an, when we authorize the closing, the employee would get paid for that shift. So she would be the one that would get her any job shift. And then I also wanted to let you know that we voted on electrical uh, upgrade for exit signs to um, correct um, violations from the, from the labor. And those are scheduled for January third and fourth. So I have a number of hours. I'll get that communicated to the different departments of the buildings so that they're prepared to see them helping.
So Bill will come in after first year, so I'll tell those scholars.
Exactly. There's a few that I have to cover and I will have list for you to look at to, you know, see if I missed anything, but I think we're all covered there.
Okay, now bring it back to the board. This is a, we're in a public session, so if you got anything else you want to get on video for the public.
I don't have anything. We're having a short meeting next week.
Yes, uh, we're opening something else.
I don't have any departments scheduled for budget. Uh, the last of them are coming on the twenty-ninth. And um, it's just open the dates that will, uh, scheduled to come in for three o'clock on Wednesday and then.
Do you want, you want, you want to come in earlier?
I think we can, yeah, just have them.
Yeah, you want to come, you want to make sure for six o'clock to seven?
Yeah, that's fine. Or even earlier in the day if you guys want, huh?
Well, I think there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a holiday function with um, being the sponsor that day.
Why don't we do it right after that?
Right after that, we.
Because we're all gonna be here for that race.
That's not a good idea, just before Christmas.
Right.
Why don't we have one o'clock?
No, I said one thirty.
Well, there's other things scheduled for noon.
For noon.
Yeah.
All right, one o'clock, one hour.
An hour would be long enough to eat.
Makes sense, right? Besides, a lot of desserts there.
What, honestly, at twelve thirty?
How come, why is one o'clock by?
One o'clock.
It looks like you got a couple of good evenings.
I didn't get.
We might have to get out and leave.
We're a small ride.
I'm just having salad.
Gonna have to get second lunch. Second lunch.
Keep us here and out.
I'll put the notice that you'll be meeting to do that and then uh.
Yes, if this place, if people still mingle in here, we'll use your office.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Because it's gonna be a short meeting, it's a few, if there's anything essential, that needs.
And that means I'll be here because I'm here for lunch, so I'll just stick around.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And you were gonna, you were gonna come in that evening, so we'll get you out of here.
That's right.
Okay, and Dave to you. Um.
I'm very late.
Yeah, I get the um, I got pricing back into the stage lift. And I was kind of uh, proactively getting those numbers because we had our lift being installed by the company that was hired by uh, Chicorn. So I had the owner's representative come out because we found out the Lula that was gonna be donated was a residential one and would not be uh, commercially suitable for the stage lift requirements. It could be a commercial one. Even though it could be probably less used than a residential one would ever have. With that being said, I had uh, the owner's rep come out and price out one. Uh, one thing that makes it a little bit more expensive is the ninety-degree one not straight and otherwise you enter from the front and you exit out through the left side. So that made it a little bit more expensive, but I did thought, uh, the pricing came in at a little over twenty-eight thousand and it was more than I expected seeing that lift that we had. There was like fifty-four, fifty-six thousand for the larger Lula, which this is, I, this is only lifting somebody up three feet high, so um, I just uh, I couldn't fathom the price of that thing, so I'm gonna um, maybe call around and check one of the price now. Because that was being donated, uh, the person that was donating said, go ahead and get a new price on one, but I think that's way, way beyond what they were thinking as well. But my thought is, next year, that might be a fundraising project is what I'm thinking for the.
Before we get on that, I saw that, I was following the emails and the, uh, our engineer Jeff, who had some concerns about a concrete base, he didn't think that was gonna support.
She, she uh, told me that it didn't need a concrete base to it.
Okay.
So when they talk to concrete base, some place, some floors are new commercial loads, it's great floors.
Yeah.
Concrete bases.
Yeah.
She said our wooden, our wooden floor is fine. They just need to sign off from a structural engineer.
I I would.
And when I told Jeff that, he just said he wanted it ready for me.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Because I hate to have um, uh, volunteers go out and start soliciting money and then they collect all this great money and then we find out then from an engineering point of view, it's no, it's, it's gonna cost more.
Or that will get.
All our ducks in a row.
Yeah.
That's how we gather all the funds.
Yeah.
So um, so that's a work in progress.
Okay, great.
And that won't hold up the use of the upstairs.
No, no, the stage will be off limits to uh, any, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then um, the electoral count, we already talked about. Um, the electrician's supposed to have an update by the end of this week on that for me. Um.
You should have been doing.
Telephone company. Um, and spoke to Scott today because that second lift also needs an independent phone line. Although it does need, does not need the monitoring that this Lula needs. So it needs a separate phone line, but no monitoring.
I would defer it on a phone line, just until we go off the show we're doing it.
Well, we're gonna bring the phone lines into the building as they're doing them, so it's there and ready. And whether we do it or not do it, it's there. So while they pull it down through.
They'll pull two lines, but not be charged for a second line until we go live, correct?
I don't think they charge until you use it anyway.
Great.
Um. Pro-technologies, they're not getting back to me and.
They're the ones gonna be monitoring the telephone.
I was gonna try them again during the snow day tomorrow and uh, I'm not having a lot of confidence with them, the way they're not getting back to us very fast.
Well, is there anyone, is there anyone else out there that can do that?
There's two other, two or three other companies that they.
Recommended.
They've recommended. We're trying to use one company to keep our family.
It's funny because that's the same company that Mary reached out to for the cameras and the security cameras in our office.
May I, may I ask Dave, who uh, the point of contact you guys had over there?
Um, I have it in my book at home. I'll let you know who it is.
Because I, uh, we had some alarm issues um, at our PD and I called them up and they were extremely responsive. Or is it more so they're just waiting?
What the problem with this is uh, the new rules and regulations on these little lifts, they have to have uh, visual phone line contact.
Okay.
So whoever's in there can pick up the phone and there's something that's not working.
Right.
And reach either you or Chief Wiger or somebody.
Yeah.
And so that's all monitored. Okay, so they're gonna do the monitoring of it as well. Well, that's something that just came out. It's the twenty fifteen code that started being enforced in twenty nineteen. A lot of these companies haven't included that under their belt and they're not sure what's required.
Yeah.
So they call me and say, oh, we, we can do it, no problem.
Yeah.
I say, you sure you know what's required of it? And I had to tell them the type of system that we have.
Sure.
And they said, well, let me get back to you. So I'm on my second person that said that. The new guy.
I can give you the president's name if you want.
Well, the new guy said, I'm gonna take care of this. I'll find out and I'll make sure we get right back. I know we can do it. It's just how we're gonna do it and all this, so.
And you've got to realize, can't get a license to this, to install it.